Absolutely.
I wanted to introduce John Moore.
Okay.
John Moore is the new employee we hired at the Service Department. It started a couple of weeks ago and I just wanted you to be able to put a face to a name.
(laughing).
And see who he is, so.
Morning, John.
Morning, John.
Nice to meet you, John.
Nice to meet you. Thanks for joining us this morning to say hi.
Yeah.
And, uh...
John's already put his face on the line for us.
Yeah.
Yes.
Looks pretty sweet, huh?
Yeah.
(laughing).
He's pretty badass, right?
Yeah.
Just don't mess with them.
That's what we're gonna stick with.
Okay.
Right, right.
What actually happened is he reached for the last bill and it's a dump one in his.
Yeah.
Oh, that explains it. That explains it.
Geez.
So, how's it going so far?
Good, I love it.
Good?
Definitely a good change.
Good.
So, you came from the county? Before the county, where were ya?
Madison Township.
Madison Township, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely like the township, feel better.
Okay.
Why?
Smaller scale, the guys are closer. When you only have a few, not as much drama, or as you could say, you know?
More politics, more people, more politics too.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a closer feel, like a more of a family feel there and over at the county.
Good.
I know Bill was talking about, you bring some skills too with the basins, I believe, right? You can do the basins. Know what you said, Bill?
Yeah, and they can run the equipment, run the equipment also, concrete.
So, um, so, um, I, I, but like building the basins back up with the, uh, with the bricks, I mean, you take them apart, but does he do all that too? Or how many guys do all that kinda work? Cause that's kinda specialized.
Yeah, he can, he can do that. We don't have, not everybody, but, but John's done that before.
How many of our guys can do that? No, Toby does it.
Yeah, Toby and, uh, and John Connerwick and John Moore.
Okay.
Do that and we're trying to get the other guys worked in on it. Hope guys won't be here forever.
Right.
Right? (laughing). Okay, well, very good. Well, hey, welcome. Glad to have you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
He was singing your praises. Glad to have you.
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Okay, all right.
Back to work.
Yeah. (laughing). All right. All right. Fiscal Officer, do you have anything for us today?
I don't know if you wanted, uh, at some point then you want, you want, you need help with this OPWC. I, I mean, there's a lot of ways to slice this thing.
I, I think Bill and I have a plan, how we're gonna get, it looked like last year sixty-three was the cutoff for funding. We're gonna get to sixty-four, I think, this year, um, the way we looked at it, so. And we're gonna submit a second project to position ourselves, well, hopefully to get it this year, but, um, position ourselves for the following application as well.
What does that mean, sixty-three, sixty-four?
Points, number of points.
So, I mean, some of these things, when I was looking at, um, you know, the, the, um, if we combine all of our projects for the whole entire year together under this thing.
Mm-hmm.
Not just, so in other words, I, okay, here's our OPWC projects and here is the other projects that we're gonna do. I'm only gonna apply for the OPWC ones. And put that all together as one application, we might, we might be able to, um, you know, score more points during that.
So, we always bring a local match of greater than fifty percent, cause that's, and that's, that's the highest you can go to get points. If you go to, if you bring a local match of seventy percent, you get no extra compared to the fifty.
Yes.
Um, and the larger, the big, the more money you ask for from OPWC, the less points you get. Um...
Yes.
So, it's, it is always a, yeah, bouncing.
Like, like, yeah, but like, I'll give you a, for instance, okay, cause I'm looking at this scoring. So, we normally, we normally go to fifty percent or greater.
Mm-hmm.
And then we go through, you ask for three hundred. Um, and then that gives us basically thirteen points, ten points for a fee, okay. Um, yeah, if we, let's say you ask for, uh, five hundred thousand.
But take a loan.
Hold on, that's one point. And if you take a loan of one fifty, then that's six points. But another five points, that gives you six points. So, you know what I'm saying, there's, there's, uh...
You, you have to increase, yeah, as long as you're increasing your total project cost to say at the...
Yes.
The half, the fifty percent or more local match.
Right.
So, what we're looking at doing is, instead of asking for three hundred thousand, asking for closer to three fifty, but taking a loan, so we're, we're gonna lose a point for asking for more money, we'll lose one point, but we'll pick up three points for taking a loan.
Correct.
So, we're gonna net two extra points, which should get us above the funding cutoff line.
Were we above the, the threshold last year?
We were at sixty-two, sixty-one, sixty-two last year.
Did we know what the threshold was?
Not really.
I mean, it's, it's different every year.
Yeah, it's different. So, they could bump it up to sixty-five and we think we're good and we're not.
Well, it's depending on what other applications are submitted and how many points they get. So, they have a certain pot of money they fund until they run out of money. So, they start at the highest rankings project and they go down the list.
So, we don't, so for clarification, we don't know the threshold of sixty-three or sixty-four?
Correct.
It could be sixty-eight.
It could be different every year.
It could be, it's different every year. It could be different.
Okay, okay.
But it's been fairly consistent around that sixty-three number for several years.
Okay. Well, this last year changed too with how they rank, we've got a lesser ranking.
So, Bill asked a question that I wasn't sure, the, the loan through them, is it zero percent?
That's my understanding.
Okay, that's kinda what I thought, but I, I know you had some experience with it, so.
That's what our last one was.
Yeah.
What's the timeframe to pay back?
It's like ten years. It's ridiculous.
Okay.
And you can't prepay it.
This doesn't make any sense. I mean, I guess it's bonds, right, so? You gotta fulfill some fellow bonds, so you gotta, they need your money, you know?
They like selling the bonds, cause then the bond people get money and the lawyers get money. That's why it's like that.
So, yeah, so we, we have a plan to get more points this year.
More money for lawyers, that's why.
Oh, he's digging.
Okay.
Not trying to get on lawyers' debt. A little bond lawyer is a lot more.
We've already established they have no soul.
All right, legal, any, anything to add?
Nothing to report from the solace.
All right.
The solace have nothing to report.
Yeah. Administrator, Mike?
Hello. Uh, first item is to give you an update on CRAs. Uh, as I wrote to you over the weekend, uh, that the residential process is complete. I have some internal record keeping I have to still work on for me, but it doesn't affect, uh, the trustees or the public applying for a residential CRA. So, they're available now, forms are available now. Um, I did wanna point out to the trustees, I, in, that people building new houses can apply for this. And I don't know if we understood that at the beginning as well as I understand it now. So, for example, I have somebody who has made an inquiry about building two houses over in the empty lot behind Heatherstone, and he wants to apply for a CRA for that. That's just a heads up that that's coming. I don't have an application yet, but it's information I hadn't seriously considered in the past until somebody saw it in the paper and called me.
Do, do we approve these, or are they blanket approval?
Uh, what, for housing, the trustees have full authority over these. So, I will submit them to you on a case-by-case basis after I've done the due diligence and, and determined that the application meets our requirements. But ultimately, the trustees will pass the resolution authorizing a CRA. It won't go into effect until they submit evidence that the, whatever project they applied for is complete. That's built into my internal system. You approve it, so they know they've got it, but if they take all year getting it done, it doesn't start until the following year after we agree that the project was done. So, you're gonna approve on a case-by-case basis and you can do what you want.
So, we don't have to approve a, like, brand-new house necessarily?
Well, why don't, so, as, now that this has come up, something we didn't think about as we go along, these things come up. Should we maybe, for the new housing, kinda set a standard that like, maybe we follow the LMI for, like, CBDG uses? Let's say where cer, that will incentivize new house building in the, uh, low-income areas. So, those CRAs will get approved for new construction, kinda set the policy that in low-income areas, we'll, to incentivize new building, we'll approve the house building, but in a non-low-income area where somebody's gonna build anyways.
I don't know if we can change the parameters of the CRA. We wrote a resolution, said, here's what we're gonna do, and that's what the state approved. Now, if we wanna make amendments or changes to it, I'll have to look into, is there a process for changing the CRA that you applied for?
But we can, we can approve.
No, I'm not saying change the CRA, because you said we have the authority to approve.
Approve or disapprove.
So, we set a policy internally.
Internally, yes.
That we approve for, so if somebody comes to us and say, hey, I'm gonna build a new house, we can say, well, actually, we've set a policy that we're only approving CRA on new developments in the low-income area, you know, low-income areas. So, we internally have something to fall back on, so we're not picking and choosing, cause like I said, Heatherstone area, like, but if somebody was gonna build a new house in a low-income...
Or a new development, yeah.
The, the new development, if, I would imagine the siblings will come calling if they, if, when they understand this.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
So, do we, do we set an internal policy now to say, we'll pay, we'll allow new, full-blown, ground-up construction for new, you know, in low-income neighborhoods?
I would...
Or low-income areas?
I would probably ask our lawyers to, to keep an eye on that, to make sure that we're, cause, cause in a sense, it's almost like we're advertising CRAs, but some of you can't have them permanently as part of our policy, and I, I'm gonna need some guidance on, and...
We can look into it next year.
So, any, any improvements, I think is great, but as far as new construction goes, cause this way, we're gonna have every new development asking for a CRA, so...
Yeah, yes, which isn't a, really a reinvestment area, I mean.
Yeah, so that's what I'm getting at. So, do we set the new construction standards internally as a policy? That we follow like what CBDG does, sets up these low-income neighborhoods or areas that, okay, if you're building in a new construction in that area, we'll CRA it. But if you're building in a higher-income area, like say Heatherstone, that's not something that we would...
Yeah, we can look into it, we can...
Okay.
And there's something else. We don't have a low, we don't have an LMI anymore.
What?
Well, we, we have an LMI, but it's Menor Avenue.
Menor Avenue is our new low-to-moderate income area.
So, that area, there's still not over, it doesn't count over there?
Township Park doesn't count, cause Lake Erie Shores and Fairway Pines.
Thanks. For hearing me.
Okay.
I thought you Haddon was in, uh...
It changed. Oh, who?
Haddon is in.
Oh, Haddon, I don't know.
Yes, yes. So, the way that, um, the census tracts are separated, it's essentially this entire area. So, Menor Avenue had an Everett, Blish, Dome, all of this is included in our new LMI, because the old LMI now includes, um, Fairway Pines and Lake Erie Shores and all of those new developments. So, though the, um, income that's coming from those developments are offsetting Painsville Township Park enough to where this is our new LMI location.
So, is there a lot of vacant lots out there that we're looking, that would be infill type thing, like in Painsville Township Park or in the neighborhoods around here?
Well, that's the other thing. So, we might be able to say, if we're not strictly, we might be able to say, Painsville Township Park and set our parameters for that area would, internally, we could say, we would approve CRA for new developed home building in Painsville Township Park in these, this area. Can you?
I, I think I understand what you're saying.
Right, I mean...
Yeah, we can, I can, we can look into it.
You know, or if there's, if there's an existing house, somebody wants to tear down and rebuild, you know, that's a perfect opportunity for a CRA.
Right.
Whereas, a new development on a vacant tract of land...
Correct.
Isn't the intent of CRA.
Or if there was an old, old gas station, they might tear it down.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, like, in Township, she says somebody's, would you, how much you say somebody's building a house in Township Park? Now, did you say like a three hundred thousand?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I don't have the number in front of me, I'm so sorry, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge home, um...
So, she's seeing it in Painsville Township Park, something, where?
Uh, it's off of, um, over by Sunny...
Sunset?
Yeah, because Sunset is that one that connects and, uh...
Between, uh, Robin Hood and Ardois.
Yes, yeah.
Cause it's got a great view of the lake, I mean...
But that's what I'm getting at. That's the area we want to incentivize new building.
Correct.
Not up in Heatherstone where average, you know, averaging costs two hundred thousand dollars.
Is it Midway? No, no, I feel like I'm wrong.
Yes.
I have to look at the map now, because I'm...
So, Mike, you mentioned that, you know, as these get submitted, you'll have to, you'll bring them to us to review, approve, discuss. Um, I'd like to ask that, we consider doing that on a, either monthly basis or every other month, as opposed to every meeting, having these pop up? That, we know that, you know, you can tell people, they'll be discussed the first meeting of the month, or, or something like that. I mean, just so that way they're not...
Is that gonna give them time on what they're gonna do, though? You don't wanna affect if somebody building, if they're, you know how things go when you're, when you're doing construction.
It could be two, I mean, two weeks, though.
Well, you, you're going every other month, you said.
Well, I said, either every, not every meeting, either every month.
Okay, once a month. They're not getting the money until they...
Once a month.
Until they complete.
And so, would you guys be okay with them exploring if we're allowed to set certain areas for new construction that we could say?
Well, so let me ask, I have a question on this map. So...
Yeah.
With this map, as it's all green, um, if it's all green like that, that whole area, that's all the CRA.
Correct.
So, all right, so why did, for example, North Shore get cut out, if I'm looking at this correctly, but the rest of Lake Erie Shores did not? And then why did, um, I mean, that's, that's how I'm seeing this map. So, it looks like North Shore was cut out and the Brooks was cut out.
Right.
Um, but then Lake Erie Shores, the rest of Lake Erie Shores, which was built just a few years before, is all included. And there's, and there are a lot of vacant parcels in Lake Erie Shores.
Chuck, you advocated for Lake Erie Shores to be included.
Yes, you did, sir.
Well, they're part of Lake Erie Shores, North Shore.
The argument at the time was that they're still very new.
Yeah.
Which was, they're, they're way too new to be included, but Lake Erie Shores, there are homes, and I believe it was...
Like yours.
Like two thousand twelve or something was the range of homes to be built, something like that.
Well, Chuck's way before that, aren't you?
Mine was two thousand five.
That's what I'm getting at. So, fifteen years or sixteen years, yes, I think the point they're making with North Shore. We want to see improvements to houses that are starting to age.
Well, so, I'm gonna interrupt you, Gabe.
Yeah.
Uh, Jeremy, didn't North Shores get started around two thousand seven?
Yeah, our house was built in oh-six.
Oh-six, so I mean, we're, mine was oh-five, his is oh-six, so we're really at the same timeframe.
So, what, so these are the...
But the rest of my street was a little bit later. There was only like three or four houses when mine got built.
So, these are the things we can discuss, I think, when we set, maybe we need to discuss some policy ideas internally. Do we set an age limit? Like, improvements to a house that's newer than ten years old, we're not gonna grant it for, because we want, you know, our ideas...
The other thing you could do is you could put together a scoring system like this, where you'd get so many points for whatever, and then you gotta hit a certain number of points.
Yeah, age of house could be a point, yeah, like age of home could be a point getter, like those type of things, and they gotta hit a certain, but people will just find ways to get points.
Yeah, but then are you committed to that?
Yeah, that's...
What if somebody doesn't qualify, but you really wanna give them one? I'm just asking the question, I...
I think it'd be important, A, to, to, for the new constructions, we gotta set, otherwise, we're gonna have these builders in here going, wow, I gotta, I gotta build twenty-seven houses, I want them all CRA'd.
There's a lot of vacant lots in Lake Erie Shores right now, and so they're all probably gonna request a CRA.
Yeah, but do we need that there, is what I'm getting at. But we would like to, we don't need new houses built there. We would like to see a turnover, let's say, in Township Park to see three hundred thousand dollar houses built.
But if they build a brand-new house in Lake Erie Shores on a vacant lot, do they, how, how do you tell them no? Can you legally tell them no, under the current format?
That's what...
I'd have to look, yeah, I'd have to look.
That's what I was getting at, if we can set...
That wasn't the intent of this.
That wasn't the intent at all.
That's what I'm saying. So, if they can, that, let them research and see if we can set up some internal policies that we have a leg to stand on when it comes time.
I said, I...
All right, so you guys look into what kinda policy we can set on that, and then we'll review.
Okay, thank you.
Good discussion, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions about the CRA at this point?
Do we...
Can you add areas? Or do you gotta go through and use the whole process?
Yeah, you'd have to create a new CRA.
So, and, I don't know, do we wanna get together for a special work session to discuss?
Let them research first.
Let them research it and see if we wanna get together?
Yeah, we'll go from there.
Give ourselves extra time to discuss.
I think that's a really good idea, cause I think this is a big deal.
Yeah, so let them do their research and then we can get together.
Okay.
And this is the easy one. This, well, this is the one you have more control over, the residential. The commercial ones, uh, actually, the Board of Trustees don't approve and don't have, um, don't have much control over at all. Those are, they have to be approved by the state first, then the county commissioners have to vote to approve them on a case-by-case basis.
Which is fine.
With, with the residential one, isn't there also something with the school board as well?
No.
No.
No, as long as we keep it at fifty percent, which is, it's in our legislation, so we can't grant one to, a residential one in excess of fifty percent.
Commercial? You sent the stuff...
Commercial, I will, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Fuck, they could go a little more, but then they would require...
Oh, yeah, we can go, I'm sorry, we can go over fifty percent, but the school board has to approve.
Correct.
So, I, I'll be working on the commercial one for the next meeting in mid-June.
Five percent.
Right, that's true, too.
Yeah, we can set.
Yeah, so that's the thing. Let them research what we can do.
You'd have to ask me, Chuck. What are you, what are you asking, Chuck? I, I did that.
So, I'm looking at, you said I approved it, so this is the drawing that I had, and it's, it shows a CRA and no CRA, and it shows North Shore being included, and also shows the Brooks being included. Now, they're out.
I, I, I don't know if that's the most current version that you voted for. I, I'm happy to look into it, but I, I don't, there were several maps that went back and forth with us in Redаче before. I will find out.
I'm not faulting anybody, Mike. I'm just trying to understand this, that's all.
Where's that map? Would, is there something that identifies it?
It says, yeah, I could email it, sure.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and I will follow up on the map.
Okay, thank you.
So, the next thing you have is a team for brush pickup. I think we picked that last meeting, didn't we?
Yeah, you did that last meeting, Mike.
Did we prove this last meeting?
Yeah, cause you said it was lacrosse or wrestling, and we said we're gonna alternate, and this time, it was time for wrestling, cause lacrosse did the last one, and we said, okay.
I didn't think we decided, I think, you know?
Well, I think, and Bill said something about this.
Wrestling came and signed.
Yeah.
The coach came and signed.
Right, yeah, we, yeah, it's...
Oh.
We did that last...
Okay, then my mistake. I, we had already done it, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, that makes up for the one I forgot to put on there, Assistant Zoning Inspector, which I will bring up. Sorry, but I gotta make a note on that map. Okay, all righty, next would be, uh, joining the Lake County Visitors Bureau. Uh, we discussed this at the last work session. You asked me to find out which communities are in it. There were six. I sent you my reports, uh...
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I'm good.
I don't, I don't see a benefit for it, so I'm not in favor of it, but it seems like I'm the odd man out on this one.
Can't win them all.
That's right. I, I don't see the benefit.
Okay.
I don't see what the township gets out of it, so.
Okay.
Point noted, thank you.
All right.
Discharging firearms, um, I, I spoke with Jeff Sherwood at the Sheriff's Office. He or Izzo, right, what I asked is someone in authority, not a road deputy, someone in authority, go with the trustee to talk with the resident that's discharging firearms. Just need to know which one of you I should coordinate this meeting with the Sheriff's Office.
I'm taking notes.
I mean, we do have a chairman, right, that represents the board?
Sure, um, so I, I will speak. Who would like to go?
I think this sounds like a good job for Chuck.
Dude, I don't care. You know what? The guy's firing into the street. That's the point of the conversation, right? I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna discharge, if you wanna discharge on your property, discharge into a safe area, not towards the street. That's the point of this conversation, right?
Right, I agree.
Okay, that's all. I'm not trying to stop anybody's Second Amendment rights. I, I've already said, I shot a raccoon in my yard. I'm good with that. I wanna keep that.
I think that'll help with the credibility that you're shooting a raccoon.
Right.
Could.
In, in a cage, so it could hurt me.
(laughing).
Shooting a caged animal.
Am I coordinating with Chuck in the Sheriff's Office?
I don't care. I'll go if Chuck doesn't want to, but I don't care either way.
Dude, I'll go. I don't care. I'm not, I'm not a sissy like some people, not mentioning any names, but, uh...
Can't win them all.
If necessary, I'd be already going with whoever goes to.
There you go.
You guys could carpool. You and Chuck could carpool together.
And Chuck, just show your legitimacy. Make sure you have your holster on your side, so you... (laughing). Look, I'm in favor.
He's got straps that go across, Jerry.
Yeah, your AR.
Bullet, uh, straps.
That's all we're talking about. That's, that's it. That's the extent of what we're talking about. Word pressing is...
I agree.
Discharging towards the street, making it unsafe.
Just be a, a good person.
Be a good neighbor.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, it's simple.
I got another guy I gotta talk to, and that one's gonna cause problems.
Buy a bale of hay, dude. Right!
I've got your emails.
Okay.
So, so out of curiosity, why do we need a trustee to go? What's the point? They want somebody to go?
That was your idea. You, you, the trustee suggested...
I wasn't gonna say send a trustee. I was saying send the sheriff.
Yeah, that's what I thought we said.
That's what I thought we were saying, send the sheriff.
I thought the conversation was a trustee wanted to go with the sheriff, and you wanted somebody in authority, either Izzo or Sherwood, and you would go together to talk. That was how I remembered the conversation. If I don't remember it right, I can ask the Sheriff's Office if they will go on their own.
Doesn't matter. I'll go. I'm fine. I'm fine, cause there's more things we gotta talk about, too, so let's go.
Okay.
Keep moving.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes.
Family fun day.
Family fun day. Um, one of the things I wanted to remind the trustees is, uh, two, two years ago, we decided not to have the car cruise in, and we said, in its place, we would have touch a truck. So, I talked to Bill, I will talk to Frank, you know, there's some trucks over there. I've, I think we'll get a Lake Tram bus there, um, so that, I'm just reminding you that we have that in place. And that was our reasoning for not wanting the cruise in. We thought that would be more attractive to the young families.
Yeah, sounds good.
This is a reminder.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Um, did we wanna do a Lake Tram tour this year?
So, let's talk about touch a truck a little more, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, besides our vehicles, what else we gonna have to make it, um, we already, we already do touch a truck, don't we?
Sheriff committed to a SWAT vehicle, I thought.
Well, we, we have some of our trucks there, but we'll, we'll, we'll put them all over in the area by the tent, um, we put our...
Where the cruise in was, right?
Where the cruise in was, yeah. Maybe bring a tractor, um...
We'll come up with some other big things, too.
Drive in, I was gonna, I see if Bob's garage, bring one of his, uh...
He will.
The big records are...
Jared, Jared, he's, he told me anytime we wanna do something, they bring something, so...
And a fire truck could be over there, and...
So, the whole point of this thing, though, is to make it more family-oriented. It's, it's family fun day, so we're focusing on the family, which is the kids and the families, and that's what we're doing. Uh, this car show, we could always do to another date. If you wanna move at some point, you could do a car show up there, and, and, uh, would we even support something like that?
Yeah.
You know, we'd even advertise for it if they wanna do, but this is strictly family fun day.
The, the kids aren't interested in the old cars, but they're interested in...
Well, they wanna touch something.
And that's it. They like, they like cars, but car owners don't want little kids on their cars, so it's like, you know?
Okay, all right, okay, good enough. Thanks for your reminder on that, Mike.
So, it's the benefit of both, I think, you know?
We got Outback Ray, but we only got him for one hour at eleven forty-five in the morning, cause he's booked the rest of the day.
So, there's a doctor in, Doc Insecta, I think his name is, does like insects and stuff. Maybe we can have Steve about him coming in the afternoon.
I talked to him for a hundred and fifty dollars for two hours.
There you go.
It, that was for the walk-around with the tarantula on...
Oh, oh, oh!
And the kids all wanna get their picture taken holding the tarantula.
Oh, God.
He also does a show, Jungle Terry, with these huge insects that he pulls out and...
And that's, is that part of the two hours?
No, that's...
Oh.
The, the, what I specifically asked him about was this, this spider thing.
So why don't we, we'll get the numbers, the guy's number, and let's see if we can do a hybrid. Maybe an hour of walking around in the show for a certain amount. You know what I'm saying? Alright, so Bill, you know, Bill, Mike, Bill, do that and then pass it off to you, okay?
Right.
There we go.
I talked to him once and, uh, just, I, I didn't know if he'd come this far. He said he's been here before, so.
So see if you'll do a hybrid for that price, you know, the insect, walking around for an hour and then a show for an hour, you know, or whatever.
Exactly. Be kinda even cool, even if he did the show first and then said, hey, I'll be around for the next hour, come up and see, yeah. So.
The Rocket Car is a maybe right now. He's already booked for the Garlic Festival that day, but he doesn't think they're gonna hold their Garlic Festival. And we'll get him if they don't go and he's just trying to find, get them to give him a straight answer. He has two vehicles, the Thriller Car, but he's so far not bringing it out this year because he doesn't have enough shows booked to justify what he has to do to.
Prep it.
Prep it, bring it out. If he decides that he can bring the second car out, we'll have it.
Okay.
I told him we were interested in it. Okay.
Is the Garlic Festival an all-day thing or can, you know?
Yeah.
Or can he?
I didn't ask him.
That's been the reason we weren't able to get two in the past is because, one, we always booked him first for ours and his second car will go to the Garlic Festival.
Well, they booked ahead of us this time.
So make, while you're talking to him, what I did with Jungle Terry, look at that fourth Saturday for next year and get it on the books now. Okay? Quite honestly, Mike, do that with all these guys I think we're talking to.
Ouch.
Sans, you know, sans, uh.
I like that insect guy. That sounds cool.
You know, besides Outback Ray, because we got Jungle Terry for next year, but everybody else we're talking to, let's just, hey, put us down for, uh, you know.
You know, we were in a routine with all these vendors. They had us on them until last year, so, but no problem.
And Car Wheel Connection, I told you, they're in, so we got that.
That's, that's good, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, so they got, they made it work. They got somebody else to reschedule their events so they can come to ours, so.
The only other question I had is do we wanna pursue having a, a township tour?
Oh.
And it partially is up to Lake Tran being willing to donate a bus to do that.
Do we do it last, did we do it two years ago?
We did it two years ago.
We did it two years ago. We decided we're gonna take a year off because we'd done it three or four years in a row and thought it was getting stale.
I just feel like one of those things are always like tr- trying to like.
To get people on?
To get people on versus people like saying, oh, I wanna go. So I was like, hey, why don't you come do this, you know?
People who go on it really like it, but not that many people go on it.
I would say let's skip it this year.
Yeah.
I disagree. I'm an older guy and I like it. I went on it. I thought it was pretty cool.
Maybe they come out and we do.
Don't do the one you lose.
You can't win them all.
Maybe, could we, like, maybe we would just arrange it for like two, two trips, you know, like, what, one, you know, like, what's it take, a half hour?
A little longer than that. Half hour to forty-five?
Forty-five minutes?
So maybe they just do two trips, one at one and one at two or something, and that's it for the day. That way Chuck gets, uh, his, you know, tour and.
Yeah, I don't care if you, if you limit it down to smaller amounts, so.
That's what I'm saying. Like, just do two tours. Have them see if they'll come for two hours and do two tours.
You know, it gives old people a chance to, older people, I mean, a chance to get away from all the noise and commotion and, and go see something. I think it's cool.
And get some air conditioning that's hot as, or get some AC, it gets hot as heck like it's been some years, you know?
Yeah.
I know some people went just because it was like.
Air conditioning, sit down?
Air conditioning, time to go ride, you know?
Can you check with the History Center and see if they can have somebody available first?
Oh, yeah, this is all pending. We get the bus, we get the tour guide.
I would check with the, the tour guide first and then I do have a name of somebody buried deep somewhere over at Lake Tran.
Okay.
That has coordinated it in the past.
Okay. I'll, I'll start looking into it. That was today's question is, do we wanna, okay. At this point, that's what I have for family fun day.
And you had assistant zoning inspector? You didn't add?
Well, no, I'm not done with my reports. I've got.
Oh, okay. Oh, alright.
I'm done with family funding.
Oh, okay. Well, that was your last item, so.
No, uh, should, uh, I'm hope on your agenda, oh, you printed out the original one. I added.
I saved, I saved the one over the weekend.
Yeah, this has got approach.
Nevertheless, uh, I've added two items. One, I mentioned to you yesterday in an email. The townships, from the administrative level, the townships are saying, do we want to approach the commissioners about sharing their art money with us for capital type projects? And the request is, does one trustee from each board of trustees wanna meet with the administrators in a meeting to discuss, do we wanna do this? Do we wanna approach them and how will we approach them? So it's on a very informal level now, just is there interest to approach them as for townships rather than on their own.
I think that's a great idea.
A great idea.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes.
Uh, so which trustee?
Five townships.
Well, we're talking four, but Lee Roy doesn't participate in anything. We can ask him.
I would, we definitely would ask him. Well, we should ask him.
We can ask him.
They might be after free money. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh, which trustee would like to attend a meeting? It'll be probably during the day, just an informal, one trustee each and some administrators.
I can.
That's fine.
I'm good, I mean, I'm good too, but if you want it, you can go. You take the, you take the fluff jobs.
Since you.
You take the fluff ones that don't require any, uh, backbone and I'll handle the other one. Yeah, you take the one you don't have to go packing.
He's gotta wear his holster.
Uh, concealed carry permit?
Since you jumped all over the first one, I'll.
Oh, yeah, I jumped all over the first one.
The last item I have is, uh, we, there is a resolution we would like to recommend. I would like to recommend that we hire Patrick O'Haron as the assistant zoning inspector. Uh, he's agreed to all the terms, the twenty-eight hours, the eighteen dollars an hour and all that. Uh, does he have any zoning background? No. Does, did anybody who applied have zoning background? No. Did, uh, well, I mean, this round, Harley did. Did Rich? No. Uh, but he has the personality for it. He's retired. He's my age. He needs to keep working because social security isn't enough for him and his wife. And I think he's a good fit for at least the first part of this, we wanted to work on violations and permits. He's a fairly assertive guy, so I think he's a good guy to deal with some of the violations we have. So I, I included his resume with the reports. I'd like to recommend that, that the board pass a resolution hiring him.
Does, uh, your input, I mean, is this somebody that you believe will be a, you know, essentially gonna be your employee too, which, you good with it?
Yeah, yeah. I think he's competent enough to catch on and, and do the job. He says all the right things. Uh, he interviews really well. Um, he's charismatic. Um, he doesn't have the experience, but he seems willing to learn and he did a lot of investigative work prior to his interview on Painesville Township and, and some of the, the components of zoning, um, that we handle, so it's all promising.
The fact that he, I mean, uh, it's kind of expected, but it's not always done, that you research, you know, the business, the business you're going to for an interview and know about it.
While Mike is supervisor of the office, you will be his immediate supervisor, so just wanted to make sure it was, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Mike and myself both had some concerns about a potential clash with our personalities, only because he is so. He, he has a very strong personality and presence, but in, in a way, very similar to Rich. Which it would just be a matter of, of me pushing myself to be more assertive as a supervisor over a personality like that. But, um, he seems really respectful and I don't think we'll have any big issues.
Okay.
You nervous for me?
No, no, I was just gonna be a smarty pants, but I won't.
Uh, the software, we are now, which, we're, I'm not at that point yet, um, but hopefully here at maybe the next trustee's meeting, um, or the one after, I'll be able to give the trustees, uh, a preview of, of what we've got, what it's gonna look like, what our residents are gonna be using. Um, we should be starting training any day now. Um, we've got our data migration and everything finished. And it's just a matter of waiting on the trainer to have available time to, to fit us in and get that scheduled, as well as Patrick's hiring, um, which.
With, you know, his age and stuff like this, he'd be okay with the computer part of it?
Hopefully.
I didn't mean by age, I meant his skill level.
His, his skill level. Um, he doesn't have an extensive background in computer skills. Um, but he does have experience working with software related to his previous positions in dispatching and things like that. So he's, he's shown that he's capable of learning software and utilizing it. Um, and with SmartGov, they're willing to, um, schedule our training to accommodate for Patrick's hiring, so giving us enough time to get him in, get him settled. And then we can do the training together, so then that way I'm not learning and then trying to reteach him. He just gets it from the source.
So one thing, just a question I have, because this is when I've always hired people and I look at resumes, I always ask this question. It always seems like a two to one year in each place.
The last three or four, when it's since he retired and became a driver for car parts stores, that's where he's been hopping. Prior to that, his average tenure was five to six years at his jobs.
Okay.
Is he, is he local?
Lives in Manner, but very, very local. He's related to the Cotters, who are related to the Lyons, who are related to the Conleys, who are related to the Cannons.
Says Painesville.
Yeah.
There's, oh, I'm sorry, he's Painesville. I'm sorry. I don't know why I had Manner. Yeah, he's Painesville. My mistake, yeah. Yeah, his local guy grew up here, uh, part of the Irish mafia of, you know, Painesville. If it weren't for the Italians, the Irish would have been the biggest ethnic group in Painesville when I was growing up. The Italians got in here and.
Well, you know what they say, Mike? There's two types of people in this world. There's Italians and those of which they were.
I don't think such is to say.
You didn't hear that one?
Absolutely true.
Alright.
There we go.
Any other questions for the part-time zoning position?
No. All good, thank you.
Send you to ethnic sensitivity training.
I know, right? Right, yeah. And it's on the record too. Got legal counsel in the back cringing over here.
It's like, it's like an Office episode.
We're gonna talk afterwards.
We got a lot of work to do around here.
We'll send, we'll send you a proposal.
I meant skill level.
Alright. Thank you. Fire chief. We have still, what, eleven o'clock?
Yeah.
How do we get you so, so fast?
We're kinda, we've got most of the things we needed for, you know, that needs list that we had a couple of years ago. We've been CARES Act, that kinda stuff, a couple of grants and, and of course the levy. We've managed to get most of the things we needed, but now we gotta shift gears and, and look at the, uh, our station's improvements and, uh, we still have a little bit ways to go there. Um, Station Two, the parking lot and the drive are in really bad shape. So I'm starting to get estimates on repaving that, um, which is, it sounds to me like the couple that I've had, they wanna tear it out and, uh, put a whole new thing in, which is very expensive, so.
But the, the problem is it, it keeps getting patched and built up and built up and you need to get some positive flow away from the doors.
Right.
So that's why they wanna tear it out and.
Yeah.
So that they can get the, get it to drain away from the building down to that curb and then run down the curb to the, to the.
So I'm still getting prices on that, but it's very, you know, we're looking at probably in the fifty thousand dollar range to get that kinda thing done there. The other things we're looking at is the restrooms at both stations redoing those. Um, they're, they've, nothing's been done on the buildings as far as like tile and things like that since the sixties, so they're, they're both in pretty, they're in bad shape or in, definitely in need of it. And then the last thing, the dormers at Station Three, I'm gonna have to get at least the middle one addressed, the one in the back, because that one's leaking, so. And, and that, so those things are what we're gonna be looking at in the next couple of weeks. I'm getting a lot of estimates and probably by our June meeting, we'll have everything, a list of what we need and what the prices are and how we're gonna pay for it, so. Well, the next thing we have, uh, right now, we have a senior rider, a senior from Riverside's part of the, uh, what's that? It's, yeah, it's part of the senior project. It's through the school. We've done it every year except last year, which nobody did it last year because of, you know, COVID and it was all suspended, but. Um, so we do have a kid riding with us, uh, and, because they're, he's under their supervision. We watch him and he, he signs in and out with us, but he's insured with them and everything, so we've done that every year.
Did we ever, sorry to interrupt, but did we ever come up with a program?
So I tried with the school.
With the school and.
So I was after them forever and, uh, the lady that's pre-pandemic, they, I, they were supposed to investigate if they could make the fire program at Lakeland part of the list of approved, um, courses under the high school college program. They were gonna check in, they were gonna check into it. I, I stayed, I tried staying on them, tried staying on them and then all this nonsense hit, so it's been a year since we've revisited that. So I'm going to revisit that again and say, okay, now that, you know, you have time now to like get into this, let's get into it and see where we're at. Because I was really pushing to have that happen, but, um, nobody would give me a definitive answer on the, uh, the school thing. Because if we could, again, if we could get that covered under the Lakeland thing for the high school kids, these kids could go for free, come out of high school and be ready to join our, our department, you know, so that's.
We've, we've made a pretty big, in the last few years, made a big presence in the schools anyways, as far as, uh, us being there for CPR classes and being present for different, uh, we did a Stop the Bleed program. We're doing, you know, last year, we didn't do anything, but a couple of years before that, we were there in quite a few programs. We even had, uh, a, a field day where they brought twenty kids out. We spent the whole day putting them on gear, putting gear on them and have them crawl through tunnels and doing just some of the training that we do. Um, and it actually has made a difference. We've got applications. We've got people applying. Big problem with part-time people is they go out the door as fast as they come in. We've got, uh, two of our, three of our dependables just got hired full-time within the last month and a half. But again, as far as like having a pool to pick from, I've got a lot of applications.
Good.
And a lot of it too is that we did increase our, you know, part-time wages last year.
Yeah.
Which brought us up to being competitive with other departments, with Manner and Concord, you know, that, we're, we're pretty competitive with that is. And a lot of these kids, especially the ones that went to Riverside, they usually come to us first, so. So, yeah, that's helping. Okay, this, you're gonna see, our guys will be testing hoses this month. They're starting, they're, they'll be doing that all, uh, May and June. Basically, we pressure test hoses that are on the trucks and the stuff on the rack that we put, you know, can go on the trucks. That's done every year, once a year. Um, every foot of hose in the entire station and, and the, um, on the trucks is all tested every year. So, uh, we'll be doing that and then also beginning of June, we'll be starting to do our hydrant program. So again, our guys will be out there testing hydrants and flowing them. We're working with Painesville. I know Painesville City's been out doing quite a bit of that, so we're working with them, so we're not like doubling up on work with the pressure testing. Uh, we'll still flow every hydrant because we wanna know which ones work and which one did, doesn't. But the pressure tests, we usually do about a quarter of the hydrants every year, so every hydrant that we have is tested at least once every four years to get us the appropriate, you know, to let us know what the pressure is and what's available in that area to make sure nothing changes, as far as like, make sure we have enough water supply.
So if, if there's a hydrant that doesn't test well, do, like, do we contact either Lake County Water, Aqua or Painesville, whoever?
Yeah, the Street Water Services, we, we'll contact them right away. Take the hydrant out of service if it's not giving us enough flow to, to, to fight a fire, which is basically, if it's less than two hundred and fifty gallons a minute, we don't, that's an out-of-service hydrant.
Do they typically repair those or do they just put that on the list?
Typically, they repair them. Now, a hydrant that's just low flow, they might just take it out of the system, depending on, um, where it is. There's, in this area especially, we've got hydrants, residential, the hydrants have to be every three hundred feet is the minimum. And we've got some areas where they're a hundred, every hundred and fifty feet. So, so sometimes they will take a hydrant out completely out of the system. If there's two that are close enough to compensate for that.
Is it, do you know, is it low flow because there's something wrong with the hydrant or is there just not enough pressure in the system?
Generally, it's the, the system itself. The, the hydrants are not usually the issue. We only have, we do have a couple of low-flow areas, um, that have been low-flow for, forever. Some of it, they've improved, like, right over here, um, on Haddon, they just put new water lines in that last year, so improved that area. Um, there's some of it in Township Park that's still a little bit low. Um, basically, for the most part, they have been working on those areas and change and putting new systems in as time goes on. I'm not, like I said, most of our areas right here in Painesville Township have really good flow.
Okay.
We don't really worry about it.
Question, chief. So I was reading your, your, uh, reports. You're talking about, um, you, you pump out the water on the hydrant. So just out of curiosity, um, I imagine that the valve is down below surface level, but how far down is the water? Like, when you close that valve, otherwise, I'm still thinking you're gonna freeze like a foot or two below because the.
Oh, yeah, we, we pump four feet of water out. We, we drop a hose down four feet and pump it out. And that's generally their, their forty-eight inches or more, the hydrants are down that low, to get below the freeze level for that shut-off. There's, there, every hydrant that we use are, they're self-draining hydrants, so they have holes in the bottom and gravel around that when they install them. So they're supposed to drain the water out. As soon as we turn it off, it's supposed to. I say supposed to because some of the water tables around here are above four feet, so the, so the hydrant will fill up with water anyways. So we pump those out, make sure they don't freeze. Yeah.
So on the physical construction of the hydrant, though?
Mm-hmm.
So it's sitting right here on the surface?
Mm-hmm.
And then when, when you're opening your valve, so is the valve down four feet below? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yeah, it's a, we have the, the screw at the top, the, the thing that'll put the bolt, you know, the bolt. We turn that. It's got a screw that goes all the way down four feet in the ground and, and, uh, when we turn that, it lifts the gate off of the, off the pipe and lets the water in.
Okay.
And then when, close it, does the same thing, lowers it back down, so.
Alright, just, I was curious about the construction of it, how that works.
Yeah, if, in fact, if you wanna, Station Three, if you're ever in the area and go into our museum, we have a cutaway hydrant there. You can actually look and, and play with it and see how they open and close. There's.
Okay, very cool. Thank you.
That's it. Just a, kind of an update on the clinics, what they're, what they're doing with that. The large-scale are finished. Um, we're doing small-scale stuff now. And we're not really involved with any of it, as, at least, most of it now, I think, is going to private businesses who are setting up their own. I know they went out to Lubers all at once. Um, the, the, anyways, we're not involved with it now. And, but we're still waiting for reimbursement. In fact, I have to go to a meeting this afternoon to, to, there's some paperwork issues that they wanna iron out, but we've, we've submitted ours. Karen's done a really good job of keeping track of it and we should be ready to get reimbursed whenever they release the funds, so. Okay?
And you said still no update on the Safer Grant?
Still, yes. No, no, no update on the Safer Grant. Um, like I said, we did, we're, we're waiting for three additional people, or hoping for three additional people. My plan with those, just so you know, uh, would be to put all three people at Station One. So to, to guarantee a four-man engine company out of Station One, that's our busiest station, or at least attempt to, we're not guaranteeing it. But, um, that's our busiest station, so that would be, that would make the most sense to have that extra manpower, as long as we had them.
That's every year we get, we can apply for a new one?
No, we get, we would get that for three years, um, and it would pay for those three guys for three years.
Yeah, I know, but isn't there a Safer Grant every year? Yeah, I know, but isn't there a SAFER grant every year?
There is a SAFER grant every year, yes.
And how much is it for?
Well, as much as you ask for. You can ask for one, two, nine people, whatever you can stick, you can supplement down the road. Uh, but you ask for three, like we're look asking for three, knowing that in three years, we're gonna be losing people. So, you know, we won't have a whole bunch of additional supplement to do um, after that three years.
We use SAFER grant for policing as well?
There, it, yeah, not this one. This one is just for fire. That's but they do have a whole, the police have their own, yes. Yeah.
I think I'd be willing to relook, but we looked into that a couple of years ago and it was not available to communities that had contracted sheriff's patrol.
Maybe it's a good time to revisit and research.
Can look into it, sure.
Cause we might be missing a boat on uh, you know what I mean?
Well, I think the sheriff would have to apply for that for his, you know.
Yeah, but if we're paying for deputy.
Sure.
Instead of him, instead of him applying to pay for his own, we're paying for a deputy out of the township. We apply and use that to pay for a deputy that we're.
Right, right. I I mean, I it would only.
Well, yeah, you could even say, look, apply for one. If you get it, you know, we will, we'll pay for it after three years. If we were already gonna pay for one anyway.
Well, right, cause my thing is, let's say, let's say that we're eligible to apply, but the sheriff's applying on the Painesville Township's behalf and getting our money.
Sure, exactly.
But that's not going to pay for our deputies and we're missing out on uh, money that could essentially directly pay for a deputy for a township.
Yeah, you could probably, I mean, you could probably work it out with him to sponsor that person. Cause even with this, we're we're paying, they pay for all, everything included. But they take the uh, they the insurance for they take, the difference between a single and a family policy is what they'll pay for. The right in the middle. So I mean, you you could back that and say, okay, you know, we'll pay for any additional costs or something like that, you know.
Yeah, but it might be something to look into because with this conversation we're having, we might be able to find some help with that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Bill. I included in my report a copy of the lawn and garden award letter that we send out. And the reason I did that is last year, there were two residents that contacted me more than once to find out when they were going to get Facebook recognition. And so I just, i- i- if we're, if we're going to put that in the letter.
Yeah, that's fine.
We wanna do it and if we, if we're going to change the format, then we just should.
So report each month, you're gonna do it, so let's just do it this way. Each month, send me a text with the pictures.
Mm-hmm.
The address and then a picture, address and a picture, and then I'll immediately take that from your text and I'll post it right online.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so and so we're still June, July and August, each of the trustees will have a pick and then the service department will have a pick.
Do two per trustees?
We each get one.
Do you do two per?
Let's not get crazy.
Why, do you have two in mind?
I mean, it's it's hard to pick sometimes.
Well, you they, that's why you got three ones, pick them the next one.
If, like I did last year, I saw two early on, so I picked one for you early on and you picked one for me later. I mean, so if you see two right away.
So you don't wanna do two?
I don't wanna do two. Cause I, cause in past years, we've always struggled and Bill has struggled to to twist our arms nicely to get us all to pick one each month.
It's not prestigious if you got signs all over the place, you know? It's prestigious if you uh, limit.
Okay, Lowey.
Somebody's quotes coming to mind.
What is that?
Boy, they're coming to me, just fucking, can't win them all.
So you're up two to one on me today.
Get the mileage out of that one.
So let me see, so never mind, I'm just gonna let this go.
But again, i- if you see two that you really feel strongly about, you know, let me know.
So what was the one that you lost on?
Visitors Bureau.
Oh, yeah, and then the one that I lost on prior?
I don't remember.
God control. Oh, yeah, so you wanna take away people second to right, you don't wanna recognize their, and you don't wanna recognize their uh, beautiful yards.
Can we get a dry rice, can we get a dry rice board mounted between?
But you do. Get a little.
Get a little tally, little tally.
You know, if you want like basketball, like electric, like we'll just, um, we'll give us the buttons, we'll just keep track over here.
All right, so June, July and August.
Yes, one, okay. So the project in Heatherstone is complete. All of the, they have one driveway apron that needs to be reopened and other than that, all the restoration is complete. Fantastic work. They have started in the Bridle Path area with the concrete crew. The asphalt portion uh, of our project, they might start milling at the end of this week, but more likely it'll be next week. They're, they started milling in Concord first and then they'll work their way toward us. Uh, the plow painting that we had last week was uh, again, a huge success. We've put uh, one of the plows out on display in front of the service department and we'll rotate those through throughout the summer to get a lot of them out there.
I did actually, I got a text from a resident who saw the one at the history center and just wanted to say they thought it was a great idea to do that program and so, you know. So people, if people saw it, when you got that one and the one at the shopping center.
It's still supposed to be in the news herald at some point, so we'll look for it there. I I met with Stormwater on what we call the Murphy Ditch. I don't know if that's the official name, but that's what we all refer to it for. It runs from Lakeshore um, north, I guess, uh, across the backs of Murphy Street and Everett Avenue. It was last cleaned in nineteen eighty-seven. We went out there to look at it again and it's going to need cleaned again. And part of the, part of this is gonna be a lot of uh, brush is going to have to be removed prior to cleaning so that the operator can even see the ditch. So Stormwater has said it will be a reimbursable expense. We'll get more information from Stormwater before we try to get some prices on it.
Is this something you would contract out to like hack like you did last time?
Yeah, I would say, it would be, I I, it's it's a pretty long stretch and gonna be pretty involved. There's gonna be a lot of dirt that they're gonna have to haul away. So well, I'll give you updates on that as we get them and uh.
Is it causing problems currently with its um, with the flow into those neighborhoods? Is that what's going on?
The the house that sits on Lakeshore, um, a lot of the drainage from the Temple Road area ends up coming through their front yard. They've got a kind of a swale through their front yard into a pipe under their driveway that runs into this ditch. And when the ditch gets full, their front water just lays in, or their front yard lays in water. And then the last house on Murphy Street, there's a spot where the water comes out of the ditch and lays in their yard and they can't get uh, grass to grow in that area. So it's something.
Okay.
When I lived down that, on Murphy Street, I'm the one that requested it in nineteen eighty-seven for for that reason. So it's been, it's been that long since it's been done.
So you were twenty-seven years old in nineteen eighty-seven?
Yes.
That was a long time ago.
Yes, yes.
My goodness.
Yes.
You were, you were older than that.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, thanks, thanks.
Hit that scoreboard, that's another one for the check.
Yeah, so we'll get that uh, discrimination trained.
And then uh, so a few years ago, Madison Township, Perry Township, Painesville Township and Concord Township went together and bought the trench shoring system that we all share as needed. And uh, Madison Township used it last week for a project. We keep it at our garage, but they came and picked it up and used it for a few days and brought it back. And so it's a, just one of those things that we work together with the other communities and uh, we use it as needed, but it's one of those things that that's nice to have.
I was afraid you were gonna, yeah.
I was, I thought, I thought that, but they broke it.
Yeah, that's what I was waiting for too.
I was waiting for that too.
No, 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 that's, that's good news, good news.
Okay.
So if you have no other questions, that's all I have for today.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could you bring Chief back to the microphone? I got a question for Chief.
Sure. Come on back.
Sure.
So um, and I know you put something, I think, a year or two or three ago about um, people having bonfires in their yards.
Fires, yeah.
Fires in their yards and um, so from a guideline standpoint, I mean, I'm not trying to, no one's trying to stop that. But um, is, are there ways to build fires um, where you reduce the smoke? I mean, so as I've gotten older, I've developed asthma and I was at a, I was at a fire the other day uh, in a backyard and and there wasn't a lot of smoke. But the next day, my lungs were killing me and um, the difficulty with the breathing and so I can relate to that. And that's why I'm asking the question. Is there ways you, people can be advised, maybe do something newsletter, I'm just thinking. But where you can build a fire, construct a fire and reduce the amount of smoke so the less air attends to the local community?
Propane.
Or is it just it is what it is?
Propane.
Well, clean or clean and dry wood. I mean, that's the main thing. The drier the wood is, the cleaner it burns.
So if it's uh, if it's wet, it smokes?
Or green, yes. Yeah.
Or not dried out then?
Right. That's, that's the main thing.
When's the next newsletter going, Mike?
Uh, I will start working on it tomorrow. Uh, I got my app, I've collected the articles. I that, so it'll go out probably in three weeks-ish.
Could you add something for that, about that and just trying to um, even even remind people on what?
That burning, we had a, quite a bit of complaints for um, a resident in the area that was burning, as soon as everybody leave for work, was burning garbage.
We took care of it.
No, I know, but I'm saying, just remind everybody that our fires are not for burning garbage.
Yeah, we.
They're for recreation and cooking food.
And really, and not for disposing of yard waste, cause you can take it to the township to.
Recreation and food.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I know, well, I've got, we put one in, what, last year, we'll dust it off. I mean, I'll find it.
Is there something on like, does it put off, um, and I'm wondering if maybe that's what I was affecting, not just the heat. But is there like um, chemicals through the combustion process that affect people more who who suffer from asthma and things?
Yeah, I mean, especially if people are burning garbage and that kinda stuff. I mean, anything with plastics in it is terrible.
What about just normal wood fire?
Well, again, just clean, dry wood is the main thing. It's just gotta be aged and dry and then it'll burn clean, so.
So if someone is, if somebody's cleaning their yard and they got a big pile of brush and then they burn it, that's gonna be a problem.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's not permitted necessarily either, right?
If it's young or bizarre brush, it's been old.
Right, well.
It's brushed and they, the ideal thing is like what my grandparents do is brush it, keep it in a pile and then in a month or two, it's dried out. And then it burns like that, but if you do it wet, it's.
We, in Painesville Township, there's a place to take brush.
I think that's part of the article too of if you're doing cleanup and you need to dispose of yard waste, we have a facility.
That services provided, please don't do it. Okay, so appreciate that, Mike. Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Cause I had asked Mike to also do an article on tall grass nuisance stuff, just to let people know that, you know, we have a process. Once you see high grass, it takes a month and a half or more before we can go out and cut it. Just kinda to remind people that, you know, the process and how long it can take, so.
And if I could add it, you know, we call the fire department to go when there's an active fire even in the backyard. But I believe this is regulated by the Lake County Health Department, uh, open burning in the environment near, so to so you know.
Oh, it does have it.
Thank you.
Zoning.
Maybe we can get a no burn zone around here.
That, that in the Second Amendment rights Josh is gonna take away.
Okay, so the first thing I wanted to discuss with the trustees was just the um, public meeting for today. If there was any questions regarding the proposed text amendments that you all might wanna discuss or or get clarification on prior to starting that. If you had a chance to review it.
You know, site triangles and fencing, correct?
Yes.
I could use a uh, I could use a uh. Yeah, refresher course on exactly what you got going on.
Okay, so for this amendment, what we are proposing are um, three new definitions in section five. One definition for a line of sight safety triangle road, one for line of sight safety triangle driveway. Um, one defines.
Was that stuck in the minutes from the last meeting?
What?
The pictures, though.
Yeah, that was in there from, she presented those last meeting, the pictures.
Okay, that's what I'm looking at. Is it, is it Z zero one, uh, one of two or two of two? I'll open them both, never mind.
Yeah, it should be all.
Twenty-one, Z C zero one.
Everything in one of one, or one of two and two of two is the same document, but the PDF scanner separated them for whatever reason.
Okay.
The file size, I'm assuming, to send. So the definitions of these line of sight safety triangles um, essentially provides how we're measuring them. One is at the edge of the roadway, the connect, interconnecting roadways. And one is at the back end of a driveway and the roadway or a um, sidewalk if it's in place. And only if the driveway is in, within so many feet of an adjacent property, um, will this be applicable. Then we have a definition for an ingress egress gate. This was based on the um, request of the fire chief to have standards for a gated entry um, into uh, development or a commercial industrial business um, that might have gated entry and they need to access with their big vehicles. And then we've got the standards and the illustrations within section six for the line of sight safety triangles, uh, both versions. The standards for fence installation, and this was based on your question that you asked me last meeting um, about them opening over. I thought it was already in place, but I guess we didn't do that and it was in this, it's in this one. Um, and then the standards for the ingress and egress gate as far as setbacks um, and the aisle width opening minimums.
So what happens that we're putting in there that you, for people's property rights, you can't have your gate open out into their property? What happens to the people that already have that? Is it just like illegal, not performing use? Okay.
There could be a set of trespasses outside the zone.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're even bringing a lawsuit over.
Could be, but at this point, they're just legal not conforming and anyone moving forward would fall under that news.
Any, any other questions or concerns on that?
Thank you for addressing the concerns we had and and getting them corrected.
You're welcome, sir. Um, we, I'm going to start with Sergeant Clean, which I had listed in my reports as Saint Clean. I apologize for that, that error. It's Sergeant Clean Car Wash. They're interested in moving into twenty-one sixty-eight Manner Avenue. It's a vacant parcel that they want to um, improve for their automatic car wash facility, but we do not permit any auto service type uses within our B one district, which is what that parcel is zoned.
You said twenty-one sixty-eight?
Twenty-one sixty-eight.
It's a lot next to Waterford.
Mm-hmm.
Next to Target. I have, it's not permitted?
It is not permitted in our B one district. Our B one district uh, provides for retail uses, restaurants um, and offices.
I have, I have no uh.
You're letting them say, you have no one.
Yeah, no, no what?
I'm saying, I have no, would have no reason, no, I would have no reason to.
To approve?
To approve, change our zoning to allow this. Just, I think we have very few spots left, especially on that corridor. And I don't think we want to um, change that to accommodate a car wash that, A, you know, who knows? We see what happens down the street with a car wash like this. Um, you know, do we want to create that same problem, you know, a mile down the road? Not even a half a mile down the road with cars out in the middle of the road trying to get in because they offer five dollar car washes. We have, you know, I don't, I don't mind competition, but within a mile of each other, we already have multiple car washes as it is. So I just don't see a reason to amend our zoning to accommodate uh, another car wash, but.
I can support that position.
And my opinion of the proposal to, to do a text amendment and permit car washes within our B one district, I don't think it's appropriate. Our B one district is supposed to be that gateway between, you know, um, uh, our multifamily residential and commercial and starting to bridge that gap. And the way to do that, you want uses that are going to be less, there's a word I'm looking for that I don't have. Less intrusive is correct, um.
Which, I'm sorry, we're trying to bridge the gap between what?
It, so with the B one, we have a B one, B two and B three district. And as we go from B one to B three, the uses are becoming. the uses are becoming, this word always escapes me, but they're, I keep wanting to say bigger, that's not correct. Impactful, thank you, that is exactly it, they become more impactful, they, they've got a larger, um, but lar- larger facilities, louder sounds.
Larger scale operations.
Yes, yes, in our B three district, which is where we're permitting most of our automotive uses, so like service garages, tire, you know, um, tire sales and, and repair and things like that is in our B three district, B one is more appropriate for, um, smaller, quieter uses, and once we start putting automotive industry within our B one, it really takes away from what we're trying to do with the B one. Now, I think what could be the most appropriate way to deal with this request would be to advise them to request a rezoning of the parcel, but then we would be doing spot zoning, that entire corridor from Mennor to near Nye, um, is B one, and then the remainder is B three. So we don't really have a transitional corridor, which would permit B two, maybe between B one, Mennor, and, and B three, but even then it wouldn't accommodate that location anyway, um, but before they moved forward in either request, they wanted to get the trustees' opinion on whether or not they feel like they would essentially be wasting their time.
I would say tell them, thank for their interest, but this is just not gonna fit.
Okay, very good. And the noise resolution that the trustees were interested in seeing in our zoning resolution, zoning was as well, this way we've got a measurable standard, um, that we can enforce and protect our residents with, uh, we did discover that we would be limited to trustee resolution, it cannot go in zoning, we can't have noise standards in our zoning resolution. So we could do this, but it would then still be enforceable by the sheriff's department, if I'm correct on that, and it wouldn't be enforceable by us.
So then would, would we, so the, and the sheriff's department would have to be there at the time?
Yeah, but it gives them at least a tangible thing that they can like say, this is what the standard is, and now versus our vague code now, it at least gives them, hey, we checked it, it wasn't, or we checked it and it was, it's a black and white, there's no gray area.
But if we were to go out and check it, were you saying like, check it with a noise meter?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so maybe collect evidence on their behalf?
Yeah, you can do that, right? Could you do that?
Could we?
Could we collect evidence for the sheriff?
No.
I mean, so I, I'm not opposed to noise resolution with adding stuff in there, but-
If you could bring it to their attention, hey, this property is-
Oh, is your, you need to-
Just wanna see the pictures of that property, wanna discuss that property.
Okay.
Are you gonna show your screen?
I'd like to, I think I've got the pictures.
So, I mean, except I'm okay with-
Good.
No, I'm saying, could they make her a special deputy to give her the power to collect evidence?
They would know that answer.
You know, I'm just saying, for something, something that's simple where she can at least be some sort of special to collect evidence for criminal cases that are, are resolutions.
You know, and honestly, that, that might be a conversation we're having, cause I know, like, I do some court appointed work, you know, I get a lot of theft cases, and I lost prevention officers, they don't necessarily collect the evidence, but you know, they give statements, they provide information-
That's entered in as evidence, right?
Then the police take over from, so, you know, it might be worth having a conversation with one of the deputies to see, I don't know what options we could do.
Cause I think it would be silly for us to get, get a noise meter, collect the data-
And then not be able to use it.
And then only have the sheriff say, okay, well, we have to go out there and hear it ourselves, or-
Maybe we can add another deputy to just go around and collect noises and stuff.
You know, but is it something that, if it's something that we need, you know, that's a constant problem at night, then we can coordinate with them to have our meter, but if it's something during the day or something, Harley, if they give, if we find out she can somehow work this with them as part of the zoning, you know, or thing, she can go out there and take it and use that as da- evidence collection, you know?
Yeah, and in other cases, I've done inspections in off hours, um, for like lightings, I've, I've done at night, so I could see it, so that wouldn't be an issue, but-
A question on the noise resolution, cause, cause what we currently have, does that apply to agriculturally zoned properties?
Is an ag pretty much untouchable?
I, I don't know how to answer that question.
Okay.
Um, but I will, I, I will call Jason and ask him to find out.
Yeah, yeah, my reading agricultural seems to be pretty much, uh, the untouchable, uh-
That's kinda what I thought as well, but I had somebody ask me, actually a property that we've talked about before, somebody asked me that there was some loud, machinery running Friday evening, I think they did stop at around eight o'clock, so, um, but-
Oh, the, the one on Park?
Yeah.
Okay.
So luckily by the time I responded to this person, you know, with the hours, they said, oh, they actually stopped, I did not go into, I don't know if we can control or enforce it on ag properties.
Doesn't the sheriff, I think the sheriff has a, uh-
Noise meter?
Decime, decimal, decibel meter, I believe that, I've seen them, I might be wrong, but I swear that they said that they use that, but, um, let's have a conversation, see if they have one too, that they can utilize for our, now that we said, cause I know their problem is that they have no standard, you know, police officers are pretty much, here's the law, and cut and dry, it says, but if there's nothing that states, then it's kind of, you know, above normal sensitivity, well, you know.
Yeah, most of the time.
My ear sensitivity and hers when she gets in the car, my music's playing, you know, so, there's a huge difference between people, so I think defining it makes a difference.
Is that an issue again, Chuck, over?
I'm trying to show you pictures of, of this, of what's driving this, this is just absolutely ridiculous. So there's, if I could, if it'll let me flip through these screens, well, so this is just one, and I've got a bunch of pictures, so this is a house on Metal Arc, and this literally, literally, they have a dirt track, so when the woman, when the woman complained, and, um, and I went over there, um, you know, initially you're hearing people ride their bikes in their yards, and okay, we've had the conversation, you can't, I mean, you can, we can't stop them from riding ATVs in their, in their yard.
That's cause that's where you say, people, you need to ride on your own property.
Right.
Yeah, well, this guy, these, these, uh, this family literally has a dirt track, and this picture only shows, I'm standing in the middle of her yard, but basically this dirt track goes up to the, up to the side of the garage, to their driveway, and then it goes all the way back here around, and then up on the other side, to the other side, and they're running circles around this house, and it is, it is, it's, this is literally dirt, it's mud, cause it's wet right now this time of year, but when this dries in July and August, it's gonna be dust, and so on our noise resolution, so with Jason and Jeremy and, and Harley here, so, I would like us to push, uh, whatever enforcement we can do on this, and I'm asking, where are we at? What can we do? Um, because with the current resolution we have, it, it talks about vibration, noise, and dust, and in my, and I think that's for a reasonable person, I think, is how they legal would, would define that, for a reasonable expectation, so this isn't like, once a week, once a day, um, this is like for hours at a time.
Yeah, but during the day, right?
So- They were there, the day that I was there, they were there, I went, I took pictures, and they were out in the front yard, on the road, doing it, and, and riding, the kid almost hit my truck, I mean, he was, he was over down the road a little bit, and then I pulled out of this lady's driveway to leave, and as I'm leaving, he comes charging at me on his little dirt bike, almost hits my brand new truck, um, missed it probably by a foot or two, and I'm just watching him, and it's like, this is interesting, and then I just drive away, but-
So it's their property they're riding on?
They are, this is their property they're on.
So their own property, the dirt bike?
They are on their own property.
So, and, so there's a similar situation over on Crestwood, where there's bikes-
And you're allowed to, Gabe, you're allowed to, however, let me, I'm sorry, Josh, let me finish this, oh, here's more, so I can show this, so it shows, so this is, this is the dirt, this is the path that goes up, now the ground is just starting to dry. Looks like the same pictures, but it goes all the way around.
So I'm all for, right, I mean, we tell people, you need to ride on your own property, but, in this case, if you live next to them, I mean, so, now it's, this is, if you have somebody riding a dirt bike-
The dusting is an argument, if it's just constantly sending dust across property line-
It's dust, noise and vibration is what's currently already in our resolution, what, what I suggested was, and I sent a picture of equipment, was, if you wanna add decibel measurements, so what I thought you could do is that the township could buy the meter, and then you annually get it calibrated, it's like, I don't know, what I'd say, a hundred bucks, two hundred bucks, it's pretty reasonable, the meter itself is fifteen hundred bucks, it has memory, and so what you could do is have the road department build us something that you could take and you could plant on this property, and you could stake it in the ground, and then put the meter in there, and then it's locked, it would record during the course of time, now you've got a reasonable thing, but in, in lieu of that, you also have the current resolution written for noise, vibration, and dust, this is just out of hand, I'm not trying to stop somebody from riding their ATVs, I mean, you're allowed to, live in the township, less government, the better, but this is not reasonable, this is not, what's the term again, um, what a reasonable person with experience.
But that's the problem, we're getting away from that because it's too ambiguous, so we need to, we're defining our decibel levels.
Let me ask, is it an issue if we, we purchase a decibel meter, and, you know, basically, the township's buying something and gets into neighbor dispute, I mean, again, I, I feel for the people next door, because I would not wanna live next to all of that, but, I don't, are we-
So Josh, part of our job, part, part of our job as a, as a township, and, and legal, please correct me, but part of our job as a township is to have reasonable expectations, and if you already have a resolution on the books, written twenty-five, thirty years ago for noise, dust, and vibration, somebody's already encountered this, so they've, they've said, this is not reasonable, and if you experience this, then the township can get involved, well, this is, we, we've been in office now eight years, you've been in ten years, have you ever addressed anything like this?
No, but I think-
No, you haven't, because it's been reasonable prior, this is not reasonable, this is not reasonable.
And, and I'm not disagreeing, I'm just trying to ask questions, just so we don't go down the wrong path, and-
Sure.
Don't think about something the wrong way, so that's the only thing I'm bringing up.
I mean, we had, my neighbor, when I was, when he was younger, when he was a kid, he's gone now, he had this dirt bike, and me and my other neighbor used to text ourselves, each other, because it was like, the middle of the day, he'd be like, freaking dirt bike again, like, but he's in his yard, just going across the front yard, ah, back and forth all day, I mean, that was just one of those-
Did he leave a dirt track in his yard like that? I mean, that is literally a dirt track.
I get-
And think if, if you were the neighbor, sitting out, trying to enjoy outside, and you had dirt bikes, dust, dirt-
Well, that's what I'm saying, if dusting is traveling, but the normal sensitivity thing is something that we're setting a standard for, because that normal sensitivity, guy next door, Mike couldn't care less, it's not bothering his normal sensitivity, so what's, that's why this whole point of us forming a new zoning code with a resolution with a defined decibel level.
So we can, we can change the existing zoning code to, to do that, but the current zoning, the current township resolution, which was drafted by previous trustees and, and voted on, says this, it addresses this on three fronts.
So if you're that property owner-
I'm fricking having a problem, this is, this is like a ninety, eighty-five, eighty, ninety year old woman.
If you're the guy with dirt track, and you see the township coming out with a box with a decibel meter to collect data against you, how does that go over, and how, I mean, are they, is that person gonna say, well, why are you getting, well, you, we're here to get involved for the residents?
We're here to represent the people when things are not reasonable, this is not reasonable, I don't wanna get into neighbors disputes about riding ATVs, we get these complaints all the time, and what Gabe described is different than what I'm just, what I'm showing you in, in pictures, this is not reasonable.
Yeah, but if it's sending dust over, that's one thing, right, but let's say this guy puts down crushed, uh, something to pay, or mulch, so that the dust doesn't happen, so the dust is alleviated.
Noise and vibration are the other two aspects, there's three aspects that, that this is in violation of, Harley, correct me if I'm wrong.
So according to what I know now, with the research, um, for a noise resolution, we do not have the authority to regulate noise in our zoning resolution, only the trustees have the authority.
Didn't they pass that by township resolution, trustees passed years ago?
A noise, uh, yeah, there's a noise resolution.
But they, yes, there's that, but also in our-
Sure, and there's three guidelines, and they violate all three.
So the, the noise, dust, and vibrations you're talking about, where in the, within the noise ordinance? Or are you talking about our, our zoning resolution?
I'm talking about what prior township trustees have voted on and approved.
Our noise resolution is currently on the books, is what he's referencing.
Okay, I, and I apologize, I wasn't aware that we had dust and vibrations within our noise resolution, I know we have it in our zoning, we have noise, dust, and vibrations within our zoning resolution, um, but I wasn't aware that it's in the, the trustee resolution regarding, regarding noise, but if, if that's the case-
Perhaps I'm wrong, perhaps I misunderstood.
Okay, so if, if that is the case, if it is within our noise ordinance, that, or the, the trustee resolution, that would be enforceable by the sheriff's department, um, not by zoning, which is that whole other conversation about, um, you know, special deputy and being able to collect evidence and, and all of that, um, now as far as our zoning resolution is concerned, the noise, dust, and vibrations, the noise portion, um, we don't have the authority to enforce, um, according to this information.
Through zoning.
Through zoning.
Correct.
Um, now the, the dust and vibrations, we can do-
This is not reasonable.
And, and I, I don't, I don't disagree, I, now, with dust and vibrations, I'll need to look further into that, my concern is, if we can't do noise, can we do dust and vibrations, at the very least, we can send them an email and say, you know, please don't do-
Yeah, but here's the thing we gotta get into.
Or not an email, a letter rather, but-
Any sandwich endangered, injured-
We, we've had to take this guy to court a couple of times, um-
On weed control, he's got weeds up the side of the house, too.
Yes, I-
It's just, and there's also a big pile of wood in the front, which is another violation, that's been sitting there.
I'm just thinking, I think let's say in my neighborhood, we got multiple people that have generators that kick on, they kick on, they use the natural gas to charge, and they kick on to charge up the natural gas, right, to charge them up?
To test.
To test, I mean, when those things kick on, uh, and it's a quiet day, the whole neighborhood can hear the same vibration.
But that's still reasonable, Gabe.
And then I also question, I also question if the health department will also get involved for the dust, because, just like with the smoke, the health department regulates the air quality control with, for smoke, I wonder if the health department would also get involved for dust, so I will reach out to them and explain the situation, I did reach out to Soil and Water regarding the, the dirt track, um, and they looked out into it, did an inspection, and unfortunately, it doesn't fall under their definition of the, the regrading and everything that, to where it becomes a violation of Soil and Water, um-
So can I ask legal, do you guys, can you guys weigh in your thoughts here?
Um, is there a way to measure dust?
There, there is, there arguably is, only because EPA has dust control measure requirements, and if you're not controlling those, and the only reason I know this is from previous experience, where the EPA had to get involved on a construction project in another community that I worked with, and the construction project people, they did get in trouble for it, so there's some method that somebody uses.
Dust, they're gonna send the kids out there with the hose, hose it down first to get around, I, I don't know.
Yeah, yes, that is, that is the way around it.
The bigger issue is, Gabe, drive over to this house.
Listen, I'm not, I'm, what I'm saying is, is that this goes back to why we started this discussion at all, the, our resolution is too ambiguous, it's too open-ended, we need to define what our standard is with, I think, a decibel, to give the sheriff's office something that is measurable, that they can go over and say, you're violating this.
When he, we're even saying, you know, no loud noises between eleven AM and seven AM, so somebody goes out there at ten-
Eleven PM.
I'm sorry, eleven PM, and to seven AM, somebody goes out there at ten o'clock at night and rips through.
It's legal, I don't know that they're doing that, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not insinuating that at all, what I'm saying is in the middle of the day, there has to be, all, all laws are written based on reasonable, now, a, a, a generator firing off, that's reasonable, because it's, it's something, it just happens, but that's different.
Part of it's the utility of what, there's more utility to a generator than there is to a-
Yeah, this, I, I keep coming back to what is expected for reasonable behavior in a neighborhood, this isn't Leroy, this isn't Thompson, this isn't the middle of Summit County, this is Haynesville Township, in the middle of development.
I do agree that a more defined resolution would make it easier to-
Yeah, so let's change the resolution and do that, I'm good, but today, I don't wanna wait until this happens, so, so today, let's address it.
If a guy's riding his dirt bike on his own property in the middle of the day, would you, I'm, I'm, no leading, I'm just asking you, is a, you know, deputy sheriff's deputy be able to go there and criminally charge him on his own property for riding a dirt bike in the middle of the day?
No, even if it's disturbing the neighbors.
It has to be quite a disturbance. Like it has to. If it's putting somebody's, I guess, life in jeopardy, okay. I mean, if it's causing duress where. I mean, i- if it's just one person, I mean, like now, you also have to take a scope where, okay, are all these neighbors in duress? Is it just this one person that's in duress? You, you had to take that all into account because every, something's going to get thrown out.
I think it's six seventy-five.
And there's not going to be any legal basis to, to cite somebody for it or arrest somebody for it if it's consistent. They're going to win it every day in court. Once they win it, they know they, they have one, they, they over, they have one over us. So the best bet is putting something defined strictly into the noise ordinance. That, that, that addresses that concern. Otherwise, it's, it's going to be a tough battle, even if somebody says that they're in duress. For us to be able to prove that. I mean, they're going to have to like, the, the proof is going to have to fall on the victim. And we're going to have to be able to correlate that duress. To what's going on there.
I've talked to the neighbor before.
Well, right, if it, but yeah, on the road, that's a whole different thing because we fall under the state law.
I think I've talked to this guy before.
But as far as noise.
We're addressing this issue.
But as far as noise goes, it's, it's a, it's a tough one.
Now, if we set a decibel limit and you guys, do you guys have a decibel meter?
No. How, I mean, we, we would have to be able to measure that decibel.
So if we give, so if we purchase a decibel meter, let's say, and give it to the sheriff's office for this enforcement, if we have a resolution.
But they're going to stop, Gabe. That's the problem with the decibel meter. If, if, that's why you need to plant the meter. Because under normal consider, I'm sorry, interrupted you, but under normal consideration, he pulls up, everything stops.
Yeah, but even if he witnesses, he just said, you guys were looking at houses, but he said that even if they, they're there and this guy's doing it, they're, they have nothing. Under this circumstance, it sounds like there's no leak for them to charge the guy with anything.
So what does our, do we have zone, I'm not trying to get the sheriff involved. What's the zoning say? What's the current zoning say?
We can't zone sound.
That's what she said.
That's why we have a zoning resolution.
So as far as zoning is concerned with noise, Chuck, is that what you're asking?
With this situation.
With this, with this situation, so it looks like what we have in our resolution right now that I know of is enforceable is vibrations and dust. So I need to do more research on those things and see how we go about enforcing those, yes.
Okay, so enforce it. You've got something to enforce.
Okay, and then.
Now, what about the noise? Is that a township resolution?
That is a trustee resolution.
But that's something he has to enforce.
Yes.
Which he just said that in order to force having a decibel, setting a standard that they can measure and see if somebody violates with, right, is that?
Oh, sorry, sorry. I was going the wrong way.
That, that's fine. It's, it's still going to be tough, but I, plus you gotta. You'll have to set parameters as far as how far this decibel is going to read and how close is going to be, is, is acceptable. I mean, if this person is right next door, they're going to, something's going to be loud, like somebody can run a lawnmower. And it's going to be that decibel. You know what I mean?
Yeah, if you're right on the property line as it passes by.
Well, with, with anything, it's over a certain length of time. And I, and I wouldn't say you had to go as far as making a decibel situation. I mean, I think there's, with your legal counsel or, or. Talking to other prosecutors possibly even who, who would have to adjudicate this. You know, putting stipulation for running. You know, obnoxious ATVs and loud machinery on your road, on, on, during a certain amount of time or you put timeframe. I, I don't, it, it's, it's very hard because we're a township. You guys know that. I mean, we're a town, just, it's just like the shooting. I mean, because we're a township, there's a lot of things that are exempt that are beyond our control. The noise, yes, it's, it's controllable. We can try a few things. The decibel thing is, could be a good bet, but it's still going to be hard to enforce. Because like you said, they're going to stop. And then if we don't, if that particular deputy is, I guess the Adam one car could take that in their patrol car. The supervisor could take that in their patrol car each shift. But by the time we get there and we park down the roadway and we put this decibel thing out, we might be too far.
Yeah.
It, it's very, I, I, I would, I would have a meeting with legal and maybe Grant, Ron Graham together. And say, hey, what's my best course of action for adding something in our resolution? That's going to be enforceable, that doesn't have to take a measure where we have to have recording devices.
Cause that's the biggest thing is the, our prosecutor essentially, we have to find something he would be comfortable that he thinks that he could go in and.
Cause, cause you could pull.
Not look stupid. I, one other thing too though, I'm thinking is if we had. Something that was a little more concrete and a little bit more enforceable, even if you guys go and you're maybe a little too far away or you go and it's. You know, they stop every time you go there. I mean, isn't that similar to having a speed limit and having an officer sitting somewhere? Everybody slows down when you see an officer sitting there.
Right.
Maybe that's part of the way to combat it too, is by having the rule and having them visible, maybe that at least curbs it to some degree.
Then you're tying them up. I mean, I, I get that, but now we're tying up an officer for something that really doesn't require an officer.
Right.
So from a township say, alright, so good, good discussion, but. Good discussion. So going forward, let's look at these other things that are suggested.
So I think the next step is like he suggested, get our, our legal with Ron Graham, not held to Ron Graham, prosecutor Ron Graham.
So let's do all that. But in the interim, in the interim, you have in the current zoning issues to address. You can immediately deal with that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's immediately deal with it.
Okay.
Is there anything we can do right now to provide this person with immediate relief? Or to get it to more a, something reasonable?
I, I, luckily I've got this guy's phone number. I'm going to call him and let him know that, the, the, the dust and the. I'm going to tell him the dust and, the dust and the noise.
I mean, this is something you're going to have to ask our legal. Is this something that he would feel comfortable taking to court under a zoning violation?
Right.
You know?
So our deputies did stop out there after I talked to you. And I, I guess we've stopped out there before. I've never had to deal with him personally. But the deputy advised me, he is, he is not pleasant to deal with. Well, and I'm sure you know, have you dealt with him personally?
Yes.
So you're kind of hitting a brick wall with a lot of things. I mean, you can go and advise him. Till you're blue in the face and if he knows he's going to continue to be able to be acceptable. And that there's not going to be a pot, you know, an enforcement issue where we can actually take it and force it.
So that, yeah, so it's not a, so he's not, he's not somebody who is going to take your bluff.
Right.
And you can't really reason with them, then, yourself, like, no?
No.
So I think two steps then.
Yes, ultimately for the zoning, I'm expecting we will have to file a criminal complaint for zoning violation.
You need to, that's two steps. They need to get with Ron Graham for the resolution side. Zoning side, she needs to get with them so they can look at this and see if there's anything that holds teeth that they can actually take to court. That won't be a waste of time and effort for everybody and, and it's, in the end, make us look like clowns, you know, so.
I don't think you'd be made to look like a clown. I don't think, I don't think in any of this to doing, you would not be made to look like a clown. What you would do is have an exercise where you would take this person to court if they refuse to settle ahead of time and correct the behavior. And if you lose, you lose. But you're still following what your current zoning states. Now, just because you lose a court case doesn't mean you, you were wrong. It just means judge saw it differently. Sometimes that's the way it goes. It's still the right, this is, this is the right, look, we've all, we've been in office eight years, ten years. We have never gone to court over anybody riding an ATV on their property. We've always supported those rights and we still will. But there's a point of reason. This is not reason. All we're asking is, please be reasonable. I think that's the question the court always asks. Is this, is this a reasonable expectation for a homeowner? And the answer would be no, not in the middle of Haynesville Township. Gabe, I'm, I don't think I'm wrong, but if I am, I'll be wrong in court.
I just feel like, well, yeah, I mean, maybe. I don't know. I just feel like when it comes down to. Maybe I'm wrong, but when you go to court, it's going to come down to, is this violating a law? And at that point.
It's going to come down to evidence. I mean, we'll, we'll talk to Ron.
That's what I'm getting at. So what he needs for us to pursue a zoning, to make sure we have enough to think that he's worth it.
Convince the prosecutor to even do something like that. And they're like, no, I'm not even wasting the judge's time with this because I already know what's going to happen.
Right.
So we can talk to, we can talk to Ron a little bit. May, we can even check around maybe some other. Maybe we can, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll talk to Joe too and see what his thoughts are. Maybe see what some of the other. Communities that might be more restrictive and see maybe what some of the baseline is. Not that we would do what Shaker Hikes would do or something like that. But maybe we can see what they try to do on the far other end of enforcing that.
And before we move on, I had a question for you, sir. If we were to create a trustee resolution with, with a decibel measurement within it. And we took that measurement and provided the evidence to your office, would that be enforceable by you if we went out and did it?
The meter would be recording. It's a, it's a electronic piece of equipment that records. So there is no tampering possible. It's recorded.
Yeah, and we'd be able to provide signed statements and all of that?
That's going to be probably the prosecutor asking that to probably. See if he's comfortable. He's not going to be able to tell you.
Okay.
I, I would, I would find it hard for us to do that, to be able to do that. Cause you're not, you're, you're not, I know you're an enforcement kid, but when it's going to criminal court, I.
I mean, all my zoning violations go to criminal court.
Yeah, you're right, so. I, I mean, it possibly could.
Okay, well, that's.
I would have to check into that.
That's fine. I think Jeremy's or Jason. Yeah, one, one of them is going to do it. I've got a list for you. Alright. Okay, so. That, I think. I think that is all that I have. Oh, no, I take that back. One more thing, CDBG grant. I need, and I apologize for not putting this in my report. Honestly, I didn't, I didn't think to. But I need the chairman's signature on the application, which was expected. You guys passed the resolution. But I also need the chairman's signature on a commitment letter to match funds. And the amount that we provided in the commitment letter was ninety-five thousand in matching support for the. The, the Bohal Park or Angelo Chicken Etty Memorial Park.
Does Patriarchy have to sign that at all to stipulate that we have the funds or?
No, not that I am aware of. I can add him.
The form should designate who has to sign.
And do we have?
The boss or chairman of the board.
It, it didn't, but it didn't, but I'll look it over just to double check. It just said that a required.
And what was the application for?
It's the CDBG grant funds for.
What were we asking for though?
Eighteen thousand for the parking lot.
I thought you said nine, you said ninety-five hundred.
No, ninety-five thousand is the commitment that Haynesville Township is putting towards the park itself. So the, this increases our chances of getting funding only because then they're seeing how large the commitment is.
That we're making a large, okay, I see what you're saying. I thought you, we were like matching the funding request or something.
No, no, no.
That, that's the way that they worded it, the, the matching commitment.
But we're asking for, okay.
What they're saying is we're asking for an eighteen thousand dollar investment from them. They want to see that we're at least putting that much into the, the park itself.
Yeah. And, but yeah, before I asked you outside of the meeting to sign this, I wanted to bring it to.
Okay.
The board's attention that I do need that signature.
I'm going to keep this for now if I have notes.
So just how does it differ when you said she couldn't collect the evidence and present it?
I, I don't know if she can.
Oh, okay. Cause I was just thinking like a bus, school bus driver can report to you that somebody hit some.
The legislator.
Is that why there's legislation allows them to do that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I was, I was just thinking that, I'm like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we're, we're going to, I mean, she would, she would be like a witness, but. I mean, it, it's a, it's a tough one. It's something I'll have to ask about.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Like I said, make her a special investigator and then we're good to go, right?
Correct.
I would like to.
Anything else, anything else for the work session? If not. I know. We will go ahead and close the work session at ten fifty-six.